All set. Okay, please rise with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is announcements. You'll notice that there are only three commissioners tonight. Mayor Thomas is traveling for work and Commissioner Binkley is also traveling. We'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Abby?
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ulri?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay, next up is public comments. This is for items on the consent agenda or not on the agenda. Please use your best discretion to complete your comments in three minutes. And when you rise and come to the podium, please give your name and address. Seeing, oh, go ahead.
Are you agenda ready?
Not, uh...
It's on items not on the agenda.
Okay.
So that means wait until we get to that agenda.
Yeah. Correct. Okay, seeing no takers, we'll move on to...
We have one taker.
Oh, we have a taker. All right.
Hi, Anne Barnes, 608 Market Street, St. Joe. I had a concern about some scheduling on a Saturday two weeks ago. There were two events that overlapped that could have had safety concerns, but we have this wonderful department here. Thank you very much. There was a previously scheduled, it was on this, on our city calendar event, this spectacular parade, and it was to start and line up around 11:00 a.m. And that's on State Street. And on Main Street, we had another event, the protest. And so we had all that going on. We had parents, because we live in a buffer zone there, circling around, trying to get to where they needed to unload their, you know, be with their children and walk there. And we had this other event, causing things with traffic up and down alleys and streets going on. Thank you very much. But it could have, it could have been bad. So my suggestion is when such things might occur at the same time that you stagger them for the safety of the community and especially the kids. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have meeting minutes of October 13th, 2025, invoice and tax dispersments, resolution authorizing transfer of unpaid accounts receivables to 2025 winter tax roll, quarterly investment report, PA 20, new board appointments, board reappointments, organizational meeting, date change, and right-of-way and park tree planting.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, Abby?
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ulri?
Yes.
Okay, there is no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Item 13, special event application, Blossom Time Events. I believe we have someone here from Blossom Time to present.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anna Abdonar, and I'm the president of the Blossom Time Festival. I live at 1910 Lake Shore Drive. First to the city of St. Joe, I'd like to thank you for all the years of supporting the Blossom Time Festival. A little-known fact, the parade has been going on since 1923. In the community of St. Joseph has been our host since then. So we're proud to be celebrating our 120th anniversary as the Blossom Time Festival. We will be crowning our 93rd Miss Blossom Time and our 28th Mr. Blossom Time. It's that season again. You're going to start seeing lots of queens and lots of kings. And our first pageant was yesterday, was the Bud Prince and Princess Pageant. We had over 40 little ones. Thank you, Chief Newbecker, for providing the service you did. We're grateful for having someone there with us. We always are happy to have support. Tonight, we are requesting to have the parade once again roll down the streets, starting on May 14th at 1:00 p.m. Of course, there are some things that happened beforehand, and I appreciate all the city residents and all the guests that support us by allowing us to close the streets and understanding. So I guess that's about it for me, but I just wanted to say thank you to commissioners, and I really appreciate you approving us. We're so grateful to be able to offer this wonderful support that we do. WSBT is our live TV coverage. We're the only parade in the country that is live TV coverage. Most people would like to argue with me and say that the Thanksgiving Parade is, but the Thanksgiving Parade is actually taped at 4:30 in the morning. So that's a parade that's not live. So we are live television, and we're happy to be able to have that. And we are the only parade in the country that runs through two cities, the city of St. Joseph and the city of Benton Harbor. So we're anxious to be able to have that approval and start our work again. Thank you.
Great. Any questions or comments from the commission?
No questions, just looking forward to the event again next year.
Okay, how would the commission like to proceed?
I move to approve requests for the Blossom Time Events as submitted and to authorize staff to issue special event permits.
Support.
Abby?
Commissioner Ulri?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Do we public comment on that?
Yeah. Do we public comment on it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, public comment. There is none. We'll move on to, I, okay, sure, sure. Sure? Yeah, this is regarding Blossom Time, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't know we were talking about this, but I'm gonna give my two cents anyways. So I'm Nancy. I own Revive Spa right over here. And while I understand the Blossom Time Parade has been going on for a long time, it's now the day before Mother's Day. And I probably lose about $4,000 in sales because we shut down this entire town, starting at about, I don't know, 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning. And I really cannot do business. I cannot do business during this because I have no parking. So it would be nice if we could figure out some way to provide some parking for maybe me and the salon next door because they lose an entire day of work as well. So it's, while it's nice, it would be nice if it would maybe be on a Sunday instead of a Saturday. And I, you know, I got a lot of people who want to buy Mother's Day gift cards, and I, I just, I lose a lot of money. So I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. Okay.
Come up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Stacy Runner, 1301 Lake Boulevard. Could you publish the map for the youth parade? I noticed in the application on the agenda packet, it wasn't in there, and a lot of times that isn't in there. And living in that neighborhood, we don't always know what streets are going to be closed, and it'd just be nice to know that ahead of time. Thanks.
Okay, any other public comment on the Blossom Time Parade? Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item 14, the, the public hearing for 315 Lake Boulevard, the Rinks Group Special Use to Increase Building Height from 55 to 80 Feet in the Downtown Height Overlay District. We'll start that public hearing at 6:11.
Okay, so the Rinks Group is the contract purchaser and is representing the two property owners for the property now known as 315 Lake Boulevard. It consists of two parcels combined. They're about 34,848 square feet in the D Downtown District. This property is also located within a downtown height overlay district, which allows a special use permit to be requested to increase the building height from 55 feet to 80 feet. The planning commission has recommend, has conducted a public hearing on the request during their October 2nd meeting, and unanimously recommended approval of the increase in building height from 55 to 80 feet for the proposed building, that it will be seven stories with two and a half levels of below-grade parking, and it will include 100 dwelling units on the, on the site, of which 32 will be residential condo units and 68 rental units. The square footage of the building will be approximately 184,360 square feet. In addition, as part of the request, before the city commission, that was not something the planning commission could do, they are requesting that the, they have three years to construct this building. So starting on three years from today, and then they have one year to start the construction from today, if it's approved tonight. The applicant is here to provide, go over their PowerPoint presentation that they did during the planning commission. During the planning commission meeting, there were nine audience members who spoke and expressed concern regarding the impact on the downtown, the community elimination of views, the need for additional public parking, and concern that the project is not being, not being fully completed at, within the timeframe. There was also an impact on, questions about impact on existing community events, traffic, refuse pickup, and large shadow the building could create in the neighborhood. Two members did support, get up and support the project. The Rinks Group is here, and they can do their PowerPoint presentation and then answer additional questions if, unless you have some for me right now.
Any questions?
No questions. Take your stand.
All right, good evening. Uh, do we have the presentation?
Yes, we do. You're being patient.
And the clicker, who's my clicker? You're the clicker.
I'm the clicker.
Okay.
You're me.
Sounds great. All right, well, thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. I'm excited to go through this. Might be familiar to some, but want to make sure that we cover all the main points for the project. So next slide. The Marquette is a 100-unit mixed-use building. There's going to be 68 apartments. There will be 32 condos. There'll be a courtyard rooftop deck with some green space. And then on the ground floor, there will be about 10,000 square feet for restaurants and retail space. And then there'll be an underground parking garage, two levels of underground parking, currently projected at 180 parking spaces, which is above the, the requirement from the city. Next slide, please. So the plan right now for the, the timeline of the project is working through the necessary approvals, closing on the property and the engineering. We're in the, the third quarter of 2025 right now. We expect to have our financing in place by early 2026 and break ground late Q2, early Q3, so like May-June timeframe of 2026. We intend to complete construction two years from breaking ground for the summer season of 2028. And then we anticipate a year to get the building fully occupied and stabilized. Next slide. For this, we've got a, a key partner and the construction company plan to do the construction of the project. Horizon Construction Group is a top 50 national contractor for multifamily homes. They've built a lot of properties in northern Indiana, southwest Michigan recently, and it's going to be a good partner for us for this project. Next slide. So in the zoning ordinance, there's a couple highlights in here for the, reading the bold portion. The applicant must demonstrate that the proposal, if approved, would result in benefits to the traditional downtown shopping district and to the community as a whole that outweigh any substantial negative impact upon the character of the downtown shopping district. And then the next bold portion, it says that a body must also affirmatively find that any substantial negative impact upon the character of the downtown shopping district potentially resulting from the approval of the request be outweighed by other benefits to the community of the proposed structure. And so, in summary, that it must be a net positive for the downtown as a whole. And I'm going to step through how we believe that the plan does meet those requirements as outlined in the ordinance. So the net positives, it's going to revitalize a vacant lot that's been empty for 20 years. It's going to beautify sites along a critically important Lake Boulevard to achieve a higher and better use than a parking lot. It's going to provide 100 new housing units for a range of income levels. It's going to stimulate the downtown by bringing year-round residents that will help support the local businesses. It's going to add attractive new options to help build out the restaurant scene, and it will provide a net positive in public parking spaces. And then it's going to help the reversing populating, population decline that's in St. Joe that's been losing over 100 residents a year since the early 1990s. And so it's also going to be the first private development in almost 40 years in the downtown. Next slide. So the master plan is honestly what really inspired this project. The goal of the master plan, this is from 2020, was published and adopted into the city's, I don't know, bylaws or something. I don't know what, it's the city's master plan. So, but the goals of the master plan are to reinforce the downtown district's character and a sense of place while accommodating desirable infill and to strengthen the downtown as a vibrant and active year-round mixed-use district. And that's something that our project is passionate about, is solving a year-round seasonality that's happening in St. Joe. We want to provide more year-round residence and living and activity downtown. So, next slide. The cool thing is in the master plan, the city's master plan, it identifies the sites for redevelopment. And if you look at sites number four and five, those are listed as primary sites, and that's where our project is located in the city, in the, on Lake Boulevard, on already identified sites for the city. Next slide. And then these are some excerpts from it. I'm just going to read the, the third one, where it's a recommendation by the consultants. They say, ideally, the city should encourage appropriate infill development of the surface lots that will create a consistent building street wall along the roadway. This will also provide opportunities for new shops, restaurants, mixed-use buildings, and other uses that will bring greater excitement to Lake Boulevard. Next slide. And actually, but I'm going to let Terry take the next one. But as a result of that master plan, it really was, wow, what's happening with these two properties, you know? And that was some of the early discussions years ago, where how's the progress been made on the city's master plan? What is happening with these lots? Who's working on this? And it was no one. And so I was like, all right, well, let's have some conversations. And, and things started to snowball from there. So I'm going to kick it over to Terry to talk about the housing issues.
So we looked at two different economic market studies that were done or commissioned by Cornerstone Alliance, the first of which focused solely on housing. The, the results of which, there's a, I know it's a little difficult to see, but that navy blue band says St. Joseph. And the study was commissioned in 2024. This looks at a five-year period, and the housing need that was projected, essentially, it was 900 housing units, a breakdown between, you know, renter and owner occupied. I think it was about 63% renter to owner. And so, you know, that also kind of helped to guide, all right, well, we know that there's a demand. We know that, that, you know, what, what that breakdown is, and we know the consequences of not, not meeting that housing demand. So, you know, leads to things like rising rent and home prices due to lack of supply, workforce displacement, which we've had a number of conversations with local folks who, you know, just, you know, that there isn't a place to live, so they need to move elsewhere, difficulty attracting businesses, aging population imbalance, and reduced school enrollments, and strain on senior services or additional consequences of that, then outmigration by young professionals. So, you know, this 2024 to 2028 timeframe, you know, for our project, the Marquette, looking to come online in 2028 and, and bringing 100 new units. So we're kind of a drop in the bucket, but moving in the right direction. Next slide. So second study, also commissioned by Cornerstone, was strictly on economic development, highlighted four key risks to the area, one of which dealt with this lack of available housing. So just kind of reiterated the same thing that was previously known. Next slide. Then secondly, is, is the missed opportunity right now due to that lack of housing and, you know, not helping to, to maintain and grow the population. If you look at the, the table at the right, what the study estimated from Place and Main Advisors is that 100 new units would contribute $5.5 million in the target area, so beyond the downtown, but essentially, you know, throughout St. Joe, a little bit into the township as well. But all those, or that's new dollars that's getting contributed to the area. Next slide. So every year, MISTDA, Michigan State Housing Development Authority publishes income and rent data that they do it for the entire state by county. So what has helped to guide our, you know, rent pricing, understanding is, is using these tables. And so, you know, we'll be coming back up for, for another agenda item shortly to talk about the, the TIF package. However, just to touch on this stuff a little bit. Also, again, sorry, it's a little difficult to see, but for 31 of, of the units in the building, and, and we'll get into this in a second, there will be, 31 of the units will be priced at the 100% of area median income. So, you know, this is a, you know, premium location. We're looking to make it, you know, a, a premium product, but we're committing to 31 of those units being priced at 100% of AMI. And then there will also be income limits on those where the only folks that are eligible are those earning under 120% of AMI. So that bottom chart focuses on, on the rent, rent levels, and then the top focuses on the actual income by the number of people living in the unit. Next slide. So this, this is a bit of a breakdown. So, you know, there, there are the 31 units that will be, you know, fully income restricted, you know, both in terms of the rent and in terms of the income. And then also, we're committing to, to pricing the, another 31 of those units below, at or below the 120% of AMI rent numbers. So what that breaks down into could be seen at bottom, I'm not going to read through all the numbers, but the long and short of it is, when you average out all of those units rents, it ends up coming to a little over $1,800 a month, which is actually $240 per month less than the 120% AMI. So this is, you know, there's a lot of terms that get thrown around of, you know, workforce housing, market rate, you know, all these different things. And some are terms of art, and then some are just used in, in common parlance. But, you know, as far as what the numbers say, you, you could see it up there for yourself. So, next slide, and that's it. Yeah, so.
Okay, so to talk a little bit more about the, the design and how it is, works within the city's goals. So out of the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, it says, a special use shall be designed, constructed, operated, maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of adjacent properties in the surrounding area. And then the special use shall not change the essential character of the surrounding use. So I'm going to walk through how the project, it, it takes the area's design and character into consideration. So next slide, please. So there is a lot of beautiful architecture in St. Joe, and there's a couple different ways to, to classify the architecture. The, the way that best captures it is classical architecture. And so when we designed the, the building, we wanted to respect all of the beauty that's already in St. Joe with the hard surfaces, the cornices, the arches. And so this is actually an inspiration picture of what we expect the portico to be around the perimeter of the Marquette. And so you would have the city sidewalk in addition to a kind of a underneath-covered setback walkway. And this will allow for the public to better interact with the building in and out. It'll also allow for some outdoor dining space for the restaurants that doesn't encroach onto the sidewalks as well. Next slide, please. So here's some examples of some other limestone facades that, that already exist downtown, the St. Joe Today Building and the Wanderlust Building. And there's also a great example across the river in Benton Harbor for the, at the Farmers Bank. But this is kind of the look that we're going for. It's limestone. It's not, it's not a white building. I know there's some images out there that make it look a little washed out, but that's reflective of the intention for it to be a stone facade and, and give the appearance and align with the beautiful classical architecture. So next slide would show some examples, other examples of classical architecture. That kind of feeds into what we're trying to accomplish with different ornament and details, arches, columns. Next slide. And then here's some examples of modern architecture. This is, there's, you see a lot of this with apartment buildings. There's a little bit of efficiency of building in a modern style with hard, sharp edges and, and bulk repeating patterns. That's not what we're trying to accomplish. And so if you look at the next slide, it should show a comparison between our building and modern architecture. And we do feel that the Marquette does take the beautiful surroundings into consideration when contemplating the design. Next slide. The other thing is to talk about the height of the building. There have been some concerns about that. The Marquette is going to stand 80 feet tall. You can kind of see shoes off to the left. And if you go to the next slide, I think it'll show some, some other comparisons. So the Marquette will be the sixth tallest building in St. Joe and the fourth tallest downtown. So you have Lakeview Terrace at 149 feet, the Whitcomb is 115 feet, the Silver Beach Hotel is 82, and the Marquette would be 80. And then in addition to that, both Lighthouse Point condominiums and the Inn at Harbor Shores are both taller than 80 feet as well. So that, that would make it the sixth tallest in St. Joe, the fourth tallest downtown. Next slide. And then here's kind of showing somewhat of a skyline of all the buildings aligned. It, it is worth noting that the Lakeview Terrace is at a different elevation from the other buildings, but if they were all on the same plane, you can see how the Marquette would measure up too. Lake Boulevard is just eight feet shorter than the Marquette at 72 feet. Next slide. Here's a shot from, kind of by the splash pad, looking up to the bluff. You can kind of see the Whitcomb, then the Marquette in the middle, Lake Boulevard off to the right. That would be the view from the beach looking up to the bluff. Next slide. Just a little bit about the community support and what we've been up to for the last six months. So we've been spending at least a day a week up here, meeting with local business owners, residents. We've met with the DDA, the Rotary, St. Joe Today. We've been trying to get out as much as possible. We've got an open door and, and trying to make sure people are informed about really what we're trying to do and what the goals are for the project. And then it's worth noting, for our last commission meeting, we had over 20 letters of support to the city commission, and then lots of focal support as well. And then, yeah, just the statement at the bottom, this project has been crafted from the beginning to be a significant net positive to all stakeholders, and we have, we have receipts to prove that the mass, vast majority of the community agrees. Next slide. Oh, that's it. All right. Well, thank you. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
I understood the, the request and reasons behind the request, so I don't have any questions at this time.
I'm particularly grateful for how you broke out the AMI housing and cost and what that actually means. I was struck by especially that last line, you know, where it shows that these, these apartments will actually, they're a great deal for people who rent in the city. I know sometimes people look at those numbers and they get sticker shock for how much rent is. I'm 37 years old. I've never owned a house. I've been renting this whole time. I promise you, those are, those are phenomenal prices. So I'm really grateful that you guys are able to communicate that out because I want to make sure that people know the diversity of people who are going to be living in the Marquette and contributing to our downtown community.
Thank you. I think it's worth also saying, like, we've been working closely with the commission on the apartments and, and the pricing for them. So part of the Brownfield TIF sets a requirement for the income restricted and then the quantity of the income restricted units. But we also went further than that and added additional, doubled that number of units that will be priced below the area median income. And that wasn't a requirement of the TIF. That was working closely with your city commission to make sure that those apartments are affordable for the everyday working professional. And we're also working hard to make sure that those are filled with local St. Joe residents that use them as their primary homestead, not folks from out of town. And so that's, that's the goal of the building, and we've been working really closely to make sure that happens.
Yeah, I think this is a good time to note that the 80 feet is really necessary to preserve the income restricted units. As Peter mentioned, the number has doubled. Any, any reduction in the height by story would have been a reduction in those units. The 32 condos are necessary to make the project go. So again, any, any reduction in the height would have resulted in fewer units being made available at the income restricted pricing.
Yeah. Good point.
Okay. I think we're all set there and no other questions from the commission or comments?
No.
Okay. We'll open it up to public comments at this time. Just ask that you please state your name and address for the record and direct any questions up here.
My name is Beth Fanning, 2424 Shoreham Highlands in St. Joseph. The following comments are applicable to any project that is going to be done by the city. It is neither for or against this building. It's about the how. Progress is always welcome, and as usual, a lot of fact finding needs to happen before contracts are signed. A preliminary site visit by any qualified contractor would be in order to see if the project can even be built on this site. There will be closures of Broad Street, Lake Boulevard, and Pleasant Street bounded by security fence. Once it goes up, it will stay for many months until the project is completed, and safe access and storage needs, needs to be maintained. The question is how far those boundaries will extend during this particular two-year project. Can merchants in general, and especially those located on side streets or have outside dining, excuse me, deal with the loss of easy access to their businesses for maybe two tourist seasons? This affects the walkability of the town in many ways, and especially access to Lake Bluff Park. Will the activities at the park, such as antiques on the bluff and the Crassel Art Show, need to be moved to an off-site location because of lack of parking and vendor access to their usual spaces? Machines need room to work. Looking at building sites near us, such as the corner at Wall, demonstrates how much perimeter room is needed to build something. Machines and storage containers stay onsite for as long as they are needed. The downtown location by design offers a finite work area. Is it enough? Materials need to be delivered as, as well as removed. There will be thousands of trucks in and out for excavation equipment, sand removal, cranes, concrete trucks, steel beams, stone cladding, interior furnishings, and many more things. Plus, room is needed for 20 to 30 parking spaces for workers and subcontractors. What route will they use to get in and out of the site? Any questions by merchants and the general public during a build will come directly to the city, not the builder. And having complete and timely answers helps everyone. The city is responsible for its infrastructure improvements and needs a template that they and the merchants can tolerate in regards to road closures and parking availability. If a builder can work within that established template, then a project will be better supported by those who are affected. And it's St. Joe, and there's always parking availability. If the timing holds, the Main Street project will overlap with the last few months of the Marquette project if they're doing their two-year timeline. There is a lot to consider, and I'm asking the city to do its homework and make sure any project helps more than it harms.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Jose Vasquez. I live on, my wife and I, on 312 State Street, and we're one of the buildings that'll get blocked when it goes up. I'd like to thank everybody that has reached out and everybody that has talked to us on both parties. You didn't have to, but they did, you know, they took the time out to do it. And pretty cool, you know, I, we appreciate it as a family, you know. It, it's, it's tough on us, right? You know, we're the ones that are going to be directly involved when this starts going up. But like I said at the commissioners meeting, at the commissioners meeting, I was, I was nervous, you know? I haven't been to a commissioners meeting since I had to get a Septic and Weld permit back in 1980 something, you know? So this is my second one, now is my third one, and I don't want to do no more. But, excuse me, I understand what you guys are trying to do. I understand what you guys are doing. And then I understand our point of view, right? At the commissioners meeting, if I did or said anything or to hurt people's feelings, you know, kind of maybe rude or whatever, you know, getting down on people and, you know, bam, bam, bam type of thing, I, I apologize, you know? It's just, it was just, when you're walking over here and all this stuff is going through your mind, you're thinking, oh, what am I going to say? What am I going to say? But at the end of the commissioners meeting, I did say that, I, I do, like I said, I understand what's going on. I understand what everybody's trying to do. And I kind of said that, what the lady just said at the very end, it, it's got to work. It's, there's so much that's involved, there's so much that's got to be done. This building has to work, you know? And I, I'll give it my blessing, you know? I mean, it's, it's pretty important for the city, it's important for what you're trying to do. And you said there was 100 homes being, people, residents leaving every year. Well, in 2021, I took it down to 99, my wife and I, you know? So we tried, you know, we tried to bring it up, but here we are, right? But, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do, you know? And I understand, my wife and I understand, it's just, it's just tough on us, right? It's tough for us to say, you know, we aren't going to see the lake no more, we're not going to see the sunsets no more, but it is what it is, right? So then, as far as I say now, my wife says, do it right, you know, don't mess around, do it right. And because like I said at the commissioners meeting, there's probably going to be a plaque put on the edge of the building somewhere, and it's going to have people's names on it. And if it don't work, I don't want to hear you guys out there at 2:00 in the morning with a chisel, taking your names off that plaque. That can't happen, you know? Do it right. Just do it right, and we'll go from there, you know? Oh, if you run out of material, where our, where our condo is, leave an opening. 20 foot by 10 foot, you know? If you run out of material, that's okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Knapp. I'm the executive director of St. Joseph Today, and I just wanted to take a moment to comment on our friends' thoughts earlier about Antiques on the Bluff and the different events that are going to be going on downtown. We host over 70 events a year in downtown St. Joseph. Three of those will be directly affected by this project. That includes our annual Winter Beer Fest, the Fall Fest, and our brand new event, the Downtown Spooktacular. Those events will have to move. This will certainly affect some other beloved events like Chocolate Block and Antiques and Farmer's Market. But me and my team only see that as an opportunity to do what we do best, which is be creative, right? These events have only ever been in these places. That doesn't mean they can't be somewhere else and can't still hold what, what we hope to accomplish in the mission of bringing people downtown, helping them fall in love with, with this town, whether it's theirs or whether they're just coming for a weekend. So we're committed to ensuring that all of our events are going to remain as fun and as charming and as family-friendly, whether they're right there in those beautiful parking lots or they're somewhere else in St. Joseph.
Thank you.
Carl Meyer, 505 Properties, 505 Pleasant Street, the building directly to the north of this project. Who does it affect? It really affects this building more than any other building in the city. I'm really kind of confused because if it wasn't a special use permit, they could come in and build a four-story building. So we would still have the same construction problems, parking, everything else. In reality, we're just talking about the two upper floors. And I just see it as, you're correct, the community should be involved in this. I would request the developer to have a website, to have information on it, to inform people if they have concerns or how to reach them in connection with it. But yes, it is going to be a convenience. We realize that on our building, but we need something to do to say yes in St. Joe to bring more development here. We're in support of this building.
My name is Mark Williams. I live at 2234 Old Lake Shore Road. Just wanted to come to you guys and voice my support for the project. I think it's a no-brainer, if you look at the master plan, that we as taxpayers paid to develop and it was approved, and it checks all the boxes. More importantly, I want to echo what the last speaker said, is that a positive vote from you guys will send a message beyond the Marquette. The Marquette is going to be great for this city, but it's going to send a message to all the developers out there that the city is open for business. It's a topic that a lot of us don't like to talk about. I'm a developer myself, but it's, it's no secret that it's been a bit difficult to do development in the city of St. Joe. I'm going to be completely honest with you, I stopped marketing, soliciting business in the city of St. Joe about six or seven years ago, and I can speak for about 10 other friends of mine that are in the contracting business too, that we avoid this city at all costs, and it's been refreshing. I've noticed in the last four or five months that I'm starting to see some positivity with development. Some people have asked for some requests, and we have zoning rules, and it's, it's always, it always can't just be a straight and narrow path. Sometimes you have to vary a little bit. And I've done my research on the Rings Group. I think they're very qualified for it. Yeah, in a perfect world, it'd be nice if we could snap our fingers and have the building there, but it's gonna, there's going to be a couple of years of, of some interruption. There's going to be some trucks, and there's going to be some noise, but there's also noise ordinances, and I, I have every faith in these guys that they're going to do it right. And this is a no-brainer. We gotta, we gotta prove this, not just for the Marquette, but for the future of the city of St. Joe. Thanks.
Hello, Chris Cook, 404 Doon Ridge South in the city of St. Joseph. Tonight is a big night for the future of our city. You have an opportunity to approve a special use permit and a TIF plan that will set this Marquette project in motion. Their vision will soon improve a long vacant corner, bring hundreds of residents to our shops and restaurants, and add vibrancy to the downtown. It will also put the city and downtown on sound financial footing well into the future. Projects like this don't just happen. They require developers willing to risk their capital and reputation and a city to work with them to make it happen. Approving this project sets in motion a new slogan, "St. Go," and sends a message to the development community that we are open for business, just as Mark just said. I wholeheartedly support this project, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Hi, Andrew Hahn with Cornerstone Alliance. I'm going to be exceedingly brief in my remarks. I've had a chance to speak in support of this project a number of times and to work with the team at the city and the developers from the get-go, from day one. They have done this right. This is a project that is consistent with the downtown master plan, with the, the market data supports this. This project has the full support from our board of directors and the organizations they represent. I want to hit again, Terry mentioned that $5.5 million economic impact. That is an annual number. 100 new apartments, which is more than 100 people, $5.5 million annually into the local trade area here in St. Joe. And then just that last part about putting us on the map. We had a Developer Day event that we did two weeks ago. We had 55 people that we brought on a bus around Marion County to sites that we believe are the peak ready-to-go sites. And the reception was incredible from that group. Tonight's the chance to make this go and make those next couple of projects start and for people to take St. Joe seriously as a place to do. Thank you.
My name is Aaron Miller, 1110 Flanders Place, St. Joseph. I feel that it's important for the city of St. Joseph to, in regards to the public parking of this project, to establish the rules of parking, to have the ability to enforce that parking, and to do patrols to enforce those rules. I think without that ability, the citizens, citizens of the city of St. Joseph and residents of the development would be in conflict. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Whipper. I come forward today as a representative of Whirlpool Corporation. I lead the Global Real Estate Department and want to offer our complete support for the Marquette. We understand and live firsthand how important affordable housing is in this, in this community, both for our employees and for visitors that want to make St. Joe home. So you have our full support, and I hope you guys approve it today.
My name is Rick Heaton, and my wife and I, Jakes, live at 1205 Lake Boulevard, St. Joseph. And I don't know whether I really understood the reason between the additional elevation between originally at 55 feet to 80 feet. And I know that extra height, I'm not sure what, if I got a good idea what you're going to use it for, but then that also affects the parking. I, I believe that you had originally had one parking spot for each condo and apartment. And as I would suspect, everybody here has more than one car. So that parking cannot slop over into the original 57 slots that were eliminated when we, when the city sold that lot to the, to the developer. So I mean, I think you really have a parking issue to begin with. I mean, I'm not sure why the extra elevation, what you're going to do with that, but the parking just didn't seem to make sense to begin with, and now I'm not sure what the extra. And now I'm not sure what the extra height is going to be used for, but it just makes the parking even worse. So I would like to have some idea about how that's going to work. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Phil Haig. I live at nine twelve State Street, downtown St. Joe. About twenty years ago, I came to the city commission and we were, my neighbors and I got a lot of people to sign some documents, I guess you will, to try to eliminate the use of excessive short-term rentals in our downtown area. Do you know if the heavy rental units in this building will be for short-term or is it going to be more for long-term renters? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay.
Joey Andrews, state representative for the thirty-eighth district. I've lived in and around the city of St. Joseph since I moved here at about thirteen years old, which for those doing the math at home means that I moved here around the time the WC, YWCA was torn down. So my time here has mostly been marked by a vacant field doing literally nothing in the middle of our downtown. And I've seen many projects come and go, mostly go, obviously, in that time period. And the fact that we have a project like this in front of us is remarkable. Since I've moved here, the city's lost about a thousand residents, about an eighth of its population from the time I've been here. If anybody wants to look up the city of St. Joe census data, the city's largest point was in the nineteen seventies with almost twelve thousand residents. And we're now at almost half that size. And if you do the math on that, that means that the number of taxpayers we have is bearing a burden for a city that was built for a population double its size. And we keep declining in population. To me, that's a long-term failure of city leadership to continue growing our city and to make it a prosperous place to live. And I see this project as a turning point for the city, as many people here have remarked on. I know I've talked to many developers and many interested parties who have been sitting at the gates, watching St. Joe for a long time now. And to them, this project really is the difference between whether they see the city as a viable place to do business in the future or another planned obsolescence, you know, in our state. So as we're trying to meet a housing crisis also in the state right now, something we talk a lot about in Lansing is meeting our existing housing crisis. Our area has one of the most acute versions of that housing crisis as prices continue to rise. You know, a lot of people found our communities since, since COVID. And the desire to live here, as all of us who live here know, is quite high. It's a beautiful area, has a lot to offer. The one thing it doesn't have to offer is housing. And so this project, you know, the fact that they're committed to bringing in hundred, hundred and twenty percent AMI units, that's the level that our housing authority, MIST, uses to determine workforce housing. So I really applaud the developers on committing to what has become a standard in our state for workforce housing, that we continue to meet that as a city and allow people who, you know, just want to live a middle-class life to continue living in the city of St. Joe and not to let the city just become a playground for the rich like so many other coastal cities in our state have become. So I just want to express full-throated support for this project. I think it's amazing. I think what they're trying to do is going to put the city on a real positive path forward. And I'm excited to maybe see the city's population number go up for the first time since I've been alive. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Andy and Ann, Ann Barnes, six oh eight Market Street. I just need to voice the concerns of folks that do live here and have lived here longer and I remember that building and I used to work in that building. The why, but concerns, they need, I haven't heard those. One of the criteria was to keep the charm, the essence of the community. And while it's a wonderfully thought-out building, it is a large building and it doesn't keep that charm that St. Joe is known for. It seriously changes the skyline from this side, from that side. And it will, if you stand on the street and look down toward the lake, it's going to seriously change things. It's going to cast a shadow on both sides. I am concerned about the height and I go back to the first time I stood here when you presented and you stood right here and I asked you, sir, how tall will this be? And you hung your head and you wouldn't answer. So that's a big concern for me on many levels. But just for the folks that live here that, and have heard people that come here to visit and we're attractive because of our charm. We're not Chicago. People can come here and see light right now, but they won't be able to see light when they walk downtown on State Street when they come shopping and things. So I'm just speaking for all those people that I've heard and myself as a, as a resident and a taxpayer. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Jim Kramer from Tim's and Shoes. And one of the things that I think is great is, I turned seventy years old this year, but also these two guys are like, they could be my kids. And it's, it's just great to see young people come and Mark, you're a young guy too, and do, want to do this stuff in town. And I applaud them for that and taking the risk and it's great.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes.
So my name is Tom Galick. I live at seven hundred Lions Park Drive with my wife. No pets actually in our house. And I'm also the, the chair of the Downtown Development Authority for St. Joseph. We have been having discussions in our group for, ever since I've been involved in that board, and that's about two-plus years, about development, improvement, expansion, growth, all the, all the things that have been mentioned here this evening. And quite frankly, this is the first time we've had something tangible to look at and having outside individuals who are interested in spending fifty-plus million dollars in our community to develop housing that's both affordable and something that we think will be attractive to the community. So I think this is a terrific opportunity. When I look at the whole agenda this evening between the TIF activity in the brownfield and this, the improvement involved in the expansion of this building's height, I think it's a wonderful day for St. Joseph, Michigan. And I think when you see this project completed, we have to go through some pain to get that done. I think it'll be handled appropriately, but when I, when this project is done and when you combine that, what's going to happen on Main Street, I think you're going to be very, very proud of this city. I think the way it's going to look, that what this is going to bring to the community, I think we're going to be in for a, a real awakening and a real positive situation for the city of St. Joseph. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Mason, eight nineteen Columbia in St. Joseph. My, my questions and concerns have, have more to do with implementation than with the actual building itself and probably, probably Attorney Schmidt would be better able to answer most of those. For example, how exactly do you maintain the parking? And how exactly do you make sure that your apartments don't turn into short-term rentals? I don't know the answer to those, but I think those are important questions because they're going to affect the long-term viability of this building. So if those answers are out, oh, and I'd also like to ask Representative Andrews, when he has a chance, how the loss of all those people over the years results in no housing? Because I, if all these people are gone, do we bulldoze their houses? I mean, I don't know, so thank you.
Any other public comments?
I just want to say quickly on that, I, I do understand that it looks strange on paper for us, for, for us to say, oh, we're losing population, but we have this housing issue. I understand how that, you know, is initially confusing. The reality is, is look at how people are using some of the housing available in the city of St. Joseph. If it is one or two people in a four-bedroom home, that is much different than a family with six people living in there. And so we've seen a trend in the age, in frankly, the age, the age of the city going up as well. And that means that the housing density looks a lot different.
When, when the city was constructed, you had a lot of multi-unit units. And in the sixties and seventies with new zoning outlines, we made all of those illegal to build anything but a single-family residence. Those are some of the ways.
Okay, any other public comments? Seeing none, we will give the Rinks Group a chance to respond to any of those comments or questions, if you would like that. No, okay. I think we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing for the Rinks Group's special use permit request for three fifteen Lake Boulevard.
Support.
Abby?
Commissioner Sorola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is closed at seven oh three PM. Back to the agenda. Back to agenda item number fifteen, three fifteen Lake Boulevard, the Rinks Group's special use to increase building height from fifty-five to eighty feet in the downtown overlay district. Kristin?
Again, this is following up to the public hearing you just closed. The planning commission did recommend unanimously, unanimously approval of the request during their October second meeting. The motion, you have a draft motion there. It does include additional language that the city commission can approve regarding the timeframe for construction. And it states that construction needs to start no later than October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-six and that you have the timeframe from there, the three years from today to have the building completed. And that's something that the zoning ordinance does give the permission to the city commission to do.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission?
I think the question before us is whether or not we see the sufficient reason to go the full eighty feet that's allowed within the ordinance that requires our approval to go beyond the fifty-five feet into that eighty-foot range. If ever there was a reason to go the full length, I believe this is it. You know, people are more valuable than pavement. And right now we have a parking lot and a vacant grass lot and an opportunity to transform those things into exactly what we need, giving us more residents and giving more residents things to do. This is an opportunity for more families to have what we have here in the city. This is an opportunity to grow and reverse, you know, generational declines and to get back to who we are. I mean, St. Joe was not what it is when it started. We grew into what we are. And at some point in the seventies, we stopped and we need to get back to regrowing. This is a step in the right direction and I'm excited to see us do this.
If I can just interject, it would be really helpful if you can tie in your comments as well. And what you said was wonderful. I think just reminding you that the criteria for the special use permit is on packet pages one oh four and one oh five. The Rinks Group went over that, but in particular, particular eleven point five point two, that the special use would be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner harmonious character of the adjacent property and the surrounding area. The special use shall not change the essential character of the surrounding area. And then section nine point four point two B, that the applicant would demonstrate that the proposal, if approved, would result in benefits to the traditional downtown shopping district and to the community as a whole that outweigh any substantial negative impact upon the character of the downtown shopping district.
I can think of no better way to enhance the character of our downtown, adding a hundred new residents to live in it and make it even better than it is.
Yeah, to Michael's point, I think that's, that's something that we really need to underscore. We're talking about year-round residences. A hundred residences would result in easily a hundred and fifty to two hundred residents. And having those around on a year, year-round basis is so important to all of our downtown businesses, be it a restaurant or retail establishment. Obviously, we're going to have some new dining options. Again, talking to all the restaurateurs downtown, I think everyone agrees that rising tide floats all boats. And the more options there are for someone to come to St. Joe to have a dining experience, if one place is busy, they go on to the next place, the more we have to offer, the more robust our visitors will be, again, year-round, not just during our peak summer season. Obviously, it's expanded tax base for the city. That's a tremendous positive. These are, these are all things that we've talked about many times and they're positives for the project. But I'd just like to also point out that this transit, this property sale from the city was a market-based sale. With all the benefits that the city's going to receive, there was a lot of talk about, should it be a discounted price? Or should the city give them the lot? To the credit of the Rinks Group, they paid a market price based on an appraisal for the property. I think that's worth pointing out. Additionally, they pledged to replace the fifty-seven parking spots. And now we found tonight in their presentation that they're going to go beyond that with eighty additional parking spots total. So a net gain of twenty-three spots. So I think this is, these are important things. Every, every ask that the city's had of these developers that they've come through, whether it was the affordable rents, they've done that. That caused the need for the additional heights of the building. That caused the need for an additional lower level of parking. So they, they've done that. Like I said, they paid market price for the building. So all of these things, they've been willing to cooperate with the city and accommodate our request. And some of them have been quietly, quite frankly, very tall. The rent adjustments result in a pretty significant annual loss for the developers over a fifteen-year period. Yet they've taken that on because it was important to the city and they've done it and found a solution. So I applaud them. Every obst, not obstacle, but every ask the city's had, they've accommodated.
I think further to, you know, speaking to the, the effect it has on the downtown, this enhances it. You know, we again have a parking lot and a vacant grass lot. I, I think those add very little to the charm and everything aspect of the downtown. Replacing those with the Marquette, that, those are tangible benefits to us. So we stand to improve, you know, as a result of this. So is that sufficient for?
Yeah, yes, I mean, I think it, yeah, the more you tie that in the.
Yeah, I'd also like to read a couple of notes from the commissioners that are not here tonight. Mayor Thomas asked me to read this note. As mayor of the city of St. Joseph, I'm thrilled to support the Marquette development project, a transformative investment in our downtown that reflects decades of community vision and persistence. The all-encompassing project will bring much-needed residential units, attainable housing for the missing middle, convenient underground parking, the vibrant ground-level retail to the heart of our city. By increasing our year-round population, the Marquette will help sustain local businesses beyond the busy summer months, creating new opportunities for shopping, dining, and connection in every season. This project represents an exciting new chapter for St. Joseph, one that honors our past while building a stronger, more dynamic future for residents, visitors, and entrepreneurs alike. While there are still a lot of details to figure out with this project, I'm excited to see this project come to life in a way that is congruent with our downtown vision. I support a brownfield redevelopment TIF in support of the project and approval of the special use permit, allowing the building to go to eighty feet. Brooke Thomas, mayor of St. Joe. I also have a letter I'd like to read from Commissioner Binkley. I'm in support of the Marquette development project in St. Joseph. While I've participated in many, while I've participated in my final commission meeting, I will continue to actively follow the progression of this project. With that said, the details of the development agreement, the next step in the process are very important and I'm optimistic that the city and the Marquette developers will come to an agreement that will positively enhance our community. will come to an agreement that will positively enhance our community." And that's from Michelle Binkley.
I am just looking forward to that higher and better use, right, that we talk about so much.
I move to approve a special use permit for the property known as 315 Lake Boulevard pursuant to the city of St. Joseph's zoning ordinance. Article 11 Special and Conditional Use Regulations, Article 9, Section 9.4, DH-OD Downtown Height Overlay District to increase building height from 55 feet to 80 feet in the D Downtown District to allow a seven-story mixed-use building with a below-grade parking based on the application prepared by the applicant and consisting of nine sheets of building elevations and drawings, along with one-page site plan and five pages of renderings prepared by Aven Marsh related to the building elevations and revised site plan and drawings prepared by Fishbeck for the below-grade parking garage and included in the October 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission Agenda Packet as updated with a new site plan dated September 30, 2025, as the request meets the required standards under Sections 11.5.2 and Sections 9.4.2.2 and 9.4.2.2D of the zoning ordinance, and that the timeframe for completion be extended from one year to three years, October 27, 2028, as allowed per Section 11.8.1 of the zoning ordinance, upon the condition that construction of the structure begins no later than October 27, 2026, and continues to progress toward completion thereafter.
Support.
Is there a public comment? Seeing none, Abby?
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes. Okay, on to item number 16, Public Hearing, Marquette Development Brownfield Plan. At 7:13, we will start the public hearing.
Good evening. So as part of the Marquette Development, they're requesting a brownfield housing TIF. And as our brownfield authority, which has been semi-enacted for the last couple of years, is ramped up, they hired Fleece and Vandembrink to help update the bylaws and assist in navigating all the changes in the brownfield regulations at the state level with MISHDA coming in and doing the housing TIF now. With me tonight is Samantha Marias from Fleece and Vandembrink, who's worked with the Brownfield Authority at length. As the RINX group submitted their plan to us, she's gone through it, and she is going to talk to the plan and her recommendations.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly. Good evening again. Samantha Marias, Economic Development Manager with Fleece and Vandembrink. Tonight, I'm going to review the brownfield plan request from the RINX group. I'll be able to take any questions, and I'll also give the floor over to TRG and Michigan Growth Advisors to talk a little bit more about their plan as well. Again, the project represents a $57.5 million project with 100 residential units. It's important to note that although the legislation is still called Brownfield TIF, that was expanded in 2023 to allow for housing development properties specifically to meet Michigan's significant housing shortage. So of the 100 units, 68 of those, or sorry, 62 of the 68 are going to be reserved for individuals pertaining 120% of the area median income. By way of example, the current median household income for a family of four is approximately $78,520. That translates to $94,200. These households typically include teachers, healthcare professionals, skilled tradespeople, and other mid-career individuals who are essential to our local economy. I apologize, I'm struggling through a cold. And this housing becomes more attainable and allows for greater movement throughout the market. For brownfield purposes, 31 of those will be income-restricted for a period of 15 years to those earning 120 or 100% of the area median income. Those details will be worked out in the brownfield reimbursement agreement, and then the additional affordability restrictions. Units will be with the development agreement for the entirety of the project. I know that there was a comment about short-term rentals. I do want to acknowledge that in order for this plan to be approved by Michigan State Housing Development Authority, there will be a restriction for the brownfield income-restricted ones to not allow short-term rentals. The property is eligible because it contains more than one housing dwelling. And I want to go through the brownfield eligible activities. It's important to note that these are all developer-funded activities. The developer is creating a significant value to this property, and brownfield allows the development team to be reimbursed for a portion of their investment for what are statutorily eligible activities. The eligible activities include demolition, infrastructure, which is inclusive of the integrated parking to replace and expand downtown parking options, site preparation, financing gap associated with the income-restricted units, brownfield plan and work plan preparation, as well as contingency and interest. The MISHDA control rents are published on an annual basis. So that is what rentals in Marion County are going for on average for studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom. To get our financing gap, we look at what the project rent is going to be, and those are the numbers that you saw for the studio being $1,369, one-bedroom $1,460, and two-bedroom $1,723 to get the total annual loss projected over those 15 years of the affordability period. This brownfield plan is the total not-to-exceed maximum amount. The developer must substantiate all of the costs that they've incurred, whether that be for the site prep for the infrastructure. We, as your brownfield consultants, go through all of the invoices, all of the contracts, and make sure that they are in line with what is being requested here this evening. And then there will be annual income verification and reporting as part of that plan, as well as the plan that's approved by MISHDA. So it's a trust-but-verify process, and can't go above anything that's here today. This also is able to generate some additional cost to the city of St. Joe, including $2 million in administrative fees over the life of the plan. The BRA set that policy to collect 10% of the tax increment revenue capture for their ongoing administrative expenses. And then after the developer is reimbursed, this plan anticipates the development team will be reimbursed in about 17 years. The BRA that may be in place 17 years from now, hopefully shorter, will have the ability to collect up to five years into the local brownfield revolving fund. And the goal of the local brownfield revolving fund is to use that to generate additional projects throughout the community. So that can be used for furthering site assessments, housing studies. You could put together your own grant and loan program. So we do like to see that number included in the plan. But again, we are not the BRA or the council that may be here in 17 years. So we leave that in there to show the value add. That could generate, if we go the total of five years, $6.15 million to reinvest in additional properties throughout St. Joe. Again, the application was received by the BRA on October 2. The BRA Board had the opportunity to meet on October 8 and October 14 and did recommend that the plan come before the city commission for approval. All of the public hearing notices were published and mailed to the external taxing jurisdictions on October 17. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. But also, if there's any questions for me, or would you like me to turn it over to the RINX group?
Well, we'll first start. Is there any questions for Sam? Okay.
Good evening. Joe Acustinelli, the Managing Director of Michigan Growth Advisors, were the consultants that prepared the brownfield plan on the project. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I love when I get to follow Sam because she does such a great job. She covered all my talking points largely. And so just a couple anecdotal things. Coincidentally, earlier in my career, I worked at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Last project I worked on was this site. So this is sort of a full-circle moment for me. Now I'm the consulting side of the table. But I will say the one piece of this project that is unique to other projects that we see as we're working with developers is this underground parking structure. It's incredibly expensive to build, and the brownfield TIF component of the project is really necessary in order for the economic reality to come to fruition here, you know, for you to achieve the density you're trying to get on this site. So that's a key piece of the puzzle in addition to obviously the financing gap. But otherwise, I think Sam did a great job covering the project. We're happy to answer any questions that you have about project economics or the brownfield plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the RINX group like to make a presentation at this point?
No presentation. You know, it's been great to work with the BRA and Kelly and Sam and Joe, as well as the BRA of the city. And it's really important when developers are looking at, you know, where's a great city to do business, that cities have a good precedence and good planning commission and BRA in place to be able to work these projects through. And so it has been a pleasant experience. It's been a great team, and we're excited about the proposal. Definitely Sam and Joe can answer any of the details that go into how those plans work together. There's a lot of legalities of how the state of Michigan works that they're much more familiar with than we are, but they've been great to work with.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
Everything got covered.
Okay, we'll now open it up to public comments.
Hello, Aaron Miller, 1110 Flanders Place, St. Joseph. I understand my comment may not be applicable, as I don't know all the fine details of TIF implementation. But if allowed, I would prefer that the base taxable value not be fixed, but to be allowed to grow as other property values grow in the area. I understand that the investment value would be left off, but if a property was worth $675,677, that that would allow to grow as it would if nothing had changed. There are entities that establish their budgets based on expected growth. And if allowed, I would rather that property grow. That would be the only change. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Mike Gary. I live at 1442 Lake Boulevard. And I have the pleasure of being the chairperson for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And for you folks in the audience, you've heard mention about the BRA. And just a little history is that I've been chair of this for quite a long time. And the previous project where a brownfield was involved was the project for Lakeland Hospital at the corner of Hawthorne and Lakeshore Drive, the apartments. And that was a traditional brownfield. And now the state law is being changed in 2023 that the housing component is critical for not just this project, but other projects. But I really need to credit Kelly and Emily, and we've got Corey Corolla back here as Pat. Pat Swim is also a member of the board. They did a great job of pulling this together on a very short window because the developer wanted to get moving on this, as the commission did. Mike Sorolla was on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board, and he made sure that all the concerns of the commissioners were voiced in those meetings. And so I think it was a tremendous team effort for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to pull it together, to get this concluded, and also the hard work that they've done to make sure that the next time, if there's another proposal of this nature, we've done our homework. We have all the information in place so that a developer coming in can see everything, and the process should go very smoothly. I just want to again thank everybody who was involved in this. I know Lori Schmidt was also part of it. So the city staff and the board did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
That Anne Barnes from 608 Market Street again. I don't have a comment, I have a question. I don't understand why that area is being designated as brownfield. My understanding that a brownfield is an area where there had been some sort of activity, that there might be contaminants or something in that area. I don't understand how the why had anything contaminating it. I don't know what was under the parking lot, but nothing's been there for a long time. So a wise person in this room, my husband said, "To be clear is to be kind." So I need to be kind and make it clear. Why is that, why are we using a brownfield anything for that area? I understand down at Scornia, when you developed down there, why? There was industry down there. I understand why we're building down along the river. I understand why, but I don't understand why you're designating that area. So that, please be clear and be kind.
Yeah, a brownfield now encompasses more than just a contaminated property. And we'll let this gentleman explain what those other conditions are now.
This question comes up every city council meeting I go to, which is a couple of times a week. So, great question. And when the legislature amended Public Act 3D1 two and a half years ago to add housing property to the definition of brownfield eligible property, it would have been great if they would have deleted the word brownfield from the statute, but they didn't. So it creates a lot of confusion. So in order to qualify as a brownfield in Michigan, you need to have, the site either needs to be contaminated. That's the traditional way people think of brownfields. A functionally obsolete building, a blighted property, historic resource, meaning it's a building listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And then new with the change in the law, about two and a half years ago, they added a new term, housing property. So you have to be one of those, not all of those. And under the definition of housing property, it means a property with a housing unit on it or proposed to be on it, one or more units, including in a mixed-use building. So this project, the entirety of the project, is qualifying as housing property because housing units are being proposed on it.
Thank you.
Okay, who would be the best person to talk to this? There was a question about the starting value of the property and then the escalating value, which is really the essence of the TIF, and maybe you could explain that?
I had that written down to respond to. So the base value is determined for the year in which the plan is approved. And the reason that typically does not fluctuate is because if it were to grow, then we would have less TIF available, so it would draw out the length of a plan. So if the taxable, the base taxable value were to increase along with the taxable value of that property, we could be looking at a 30-year plan as compared to a 17-year plan. And the goal is to, you know, get this up and running as fast as possible.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, would the RINX group like to address anything that was brought up? No, okay. I think we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing on the brownfield plan for the Marquette.
Support.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is officially closed at 7:30. We will now go to item number 17, the Marquette Development Brownfield Plan. And Kelly will give us the presentation on it.
So much like we did before, this motion has to do with the approval of the Marquette Development Brownfield Plan presented. The draft motion is in front of you. The application was submitted on October 2. The application was submitted on October 2nd and the Brownfield Authority did recommend approval on October 15th to you. I can go through the details again if you want, but I feel like if you know them or have questions, so I would ask that you consider this for approval.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
No questions, just want to once again draw attention to the fact, I mean, this was a lot of, you know, great and hard work to get this, you know, put together and, you know, it is my hope that, you know, not only will we be able to use this, you know, brownfield authority now for this project, but in the future, we need this up and running for future development projects. So no questions, just to thank you for everything that went into it. And I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving a brownfield plan for the Marquette at Lake Boulevard, St. Joseph, Michigan pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of Act 381 of the Public Acts of State of Michigan of 1996 as amended.
Support.
Are there any public comments on the Marquette Development Brownfield Plan? Seeing none, Abby?
Commissioner Sorola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public hearing for the DDA TIF District, which we will open at 7:32 PM.
Guess who's back?
Guess who's back?
So as you know, the Downtown Development Authority has been exploring the possibility of establishing a tax increment finance TIF district for quite some time. A TIF works by recording the current or base level property tax in a designated area. And as those property values increase over time through new development or improvements, the incremental growth in a property tax revenue is captured by the DDA. Those dollars are then reinvested into the area, which in our case is the DDA. About a year ago, the DDA was close to bringing the plan forward to city commission. However, the process was paused to form the Required Resident Advisory Council, which is necessary for downtown districts with more than 100 residents. The city commission approved the creation of that council at its July 28th meeting. While we still have a couple of open seats, the five current members of that council did meet and reviewed the plan and we'll get to recommending approval. Right now, Andrew Hahn from Cornerstone Alliance is with me. He's been invaluable in helping us get all this up and running. He's going to run through a presentation and we'll circle back.
All right, thank you. Again, my name is Andrew Hahn with Cornerstone Alliance. I am the Senior Vice President of Community Development and I've had the chance throughout my career to work, most of my career specializing in this work in downtown development. And I'm going to talk a little bit about TIF. I realize this could have been helpful context for the last discussion, but I hope it is retroactively helpful. So go to the next slide. I think there's one more that has highlights. All right, I want to draw attention to a couple phrases here in what the DDA Act does. This was set up back in 1975 at a time where downtowns were hollowing out, right? Suburbs were growing, it's time of urban renewal, there were some desperate needs to do something to help our downtowns throughout our state. So the key phrases I want to draw you to, what they're for are to correct and prevent deterioration, to promote economic growth, and to authorize the use of tax increment financing. Next slide. So some context about what the DDA is and where it is. It's probably hard to read the street names on there, but that northeast boundary is Port Street, the west boundary is Lake Boulevard, kind of jogs around, I think that's Market at the bottom left and makes a couple, a little jog there around a couple residential properties. And then kind of the far east is Church Streets. That's your downtown. It's a, your DDA, that is the Downtown Development Authority. Downtown's a little bigger than that and is not officially designated. Some helpful context, that property is 2% of the city's landmass and about 5% of the taxable value of the city. Next slide. So our DDA is funded. They can be funded in several different ways. A special assessment, so DDAs can levy a two mil assessment within a district. That's something that has historically been done in St. Joe. It's generated about $60,000 a year. They can apply for grants, they can accept donations. The one we're here to talk about tonight is tax increment financing. So they have this ability to establish a plan for up to 30 years to capture that growth in taxes within the district. It's used by most DDAs throughout the state and it enables that inflationary growth capture. I've got an infographic here in a second that'll help explain it a little bit. It's important to note that this revenue captures funding that the city and the DDA would otherwise not have access to and provides funding to the DDA to do more for downtown community and increase the city's ability to be progressive and competitive. So this is the technical slide and I'm going to do my best to explain it. The vertical axis is as the property values go up. The horizontal is the time going towards the right. So that yellow bar at the bottom is the baseline property value. That's a total value of all the properties within the district when the TIF is established. That line stays flat going to the right. And what that represents is the other taxing units that collect taxes today on those properties. They keep that same amount of revenue for the duration. They are not impaired negatively. The upside during that period goes to the Downtown Development Authority, that blue portion. So as those values go up, and it starts real small, that delta from year one to year two, and this plan's about $20,000. By the time you get out to year 20 and beyond, it becomes real money that can have a serious impact in improving downtown. At the termination of that plan, where that full yellow bar starts again, all the revenues flow back through to the other taxing jurisdictions. So what can these things, what can this TIF fund? This is broken out into four big categories. So they have to be reinvested within that boundary. That growth is captured within the boundary, has to be spent within the boundary. This plan lays out the priority, the district priorities, and includes other anticipated revenues and spending, including the DDA millage. So operations and maintenance is one thing. That's things that happen every day. The maintenance of the parking lots, emptying of the trash, a seasonal decor, plantings, stuff like that. Streetscape, sidewalk amenities and infrastructure. So sidewalk repairs, new street furniture. Infrastructure underground can be funded with this. Upgrades to the parking lots and alleys are also something that could be funded. Professional services, marketing and grant making. So grant programs are something that these funds can go to. DDAs often do things like facade grant programs. They cannot go, those grants coming from the TIF have to go for things that have a public benefit. You can't give somebody money to fix up the floors in their storefront. It has to be on the outside. Marketing, right, we have to communicate on what a great downtown we have here in this community to be able to attract people to it, to live here, to visit, and then other professional services. And then that last thing, probably the least exciting one is the administration, the day-to-day stuff, right? You have to have an audit every year, there's transportation, other things. So what's St. Joe's history with TIF? Again, this tool came out in 1975. A lot of cities moved to quickly embrace this. St. Joe was kind of on that first wave. They set up a plan in 1979 and it was a plan that ran for five years. It was a five-year plan, pretty modest in its scope, and it laid out a handful of infrastructure projects that it was going to fund. When those funds were collected and those projects were done, plan was done. So it did what it was supposed to do as envisioned by the leadership at the time. However, many communities throughout the state have seen the value that this tool provides when you use it to its full duration and even extend it sometimes. So those increments can be very big and they've been very, very impactful in other parts of the state. So I can't speak to why this was done this way in St. Joe, but it was kind of a narrower take on how to use this tool. Go ahead. So what informs this TIF and development plan? Everything comes from the downtown vision master plan. You heard the folks in the RINX group talk about that. And this master plan is that official plan and policy guide for downtown St. Joe. It gives a decision-making framework, staff, elected and appointed officials, residents. It presents a community vision for the future of downtown, specific strategies, recommendations on investment, the types of uses, desired built form, and the stuff that the community said they wanted to see in downtown. But, next one. Sorry. Oh, so the community, I mentioned the community. In this plan that the city did back in 2018 and 19 and was approved in 2020, over 2,000 people participated in that plan. That's over 25% of the community. This was a truly community-led and developed plan. That's 800 people came and engaged in person, 850 online, and over 300 that submitted written comments on this. So what's in this plan? The plan outlines, all DDA TIF and development plans have to outline the anticipated revenues over the term of its life, how they'll be collected, along with estimated investments by category. It's a bit of a loose roadmap, right? The capture can change. If property values go off a cliff, priorities can change as time goes on. Each year, as the revenue projections are provided, the DDA prepares a budget for those TIF revenues that reflect the current needs and priorities and they have to reference back to the plan. And then every year, the city commission approves that DDA budget after DDA makes their So some questions that came up over the summer and into the fall were, well, who's the DDA? Who leads this? What is the DDA? The DDA is appointed, the board is appointed by city commission to four-year terms. The DDA members have to have an interest in downtown. Often that's a business owner, a property owner, resident. According to the State Enabling Act, every board has to have at least one resident on it. This one does. And the board meets every meeting, or every Monday, and it's 8:30, not 8:00 AM, right here in this room, the first Monday of the month. So if you want to get involved or hear what they're doing, come show up, get engaged. And I've got the current DDA roster on there as well. I'm sure people in this room know a lot of those people. Go ahead. This is not a bleeding-edge tool, as I noted. This is a list of communities that, the little last thing at the very bottom, this was a citation from, this came from the one place I could find a comprehensive list. It dates back to 2016, provided by the Michigan Department of Treasury. There's about 125 communities on there that actively have TIF plans for their DDAs. Not included in this list, but ones that are active within Beringate County. Niles, New Buffalo, Coloma, Waterville, and I feel like I'm missing a fifth, but there's a number that do in Beringate County. Again, common statewide, common within this county. So what's, what impact will the plan as written have? That would fund redesign and reconstruction of downtown parking lots as those revenues grow? It's not going to happen year one with that, those small amount at the start. Updates and maintenance to them annually? You've heard the MDOT Main Street project talked about a little bit. That is a reconstruction of the majority of Main Street within the city, several blocks of which are within downtown. And if, when MDOT comes in and does a project like that, you can have the MDOT version of the project, or you can have your local version of the project. And this plan envisions kind of some additive funds to help make that a better project that has more landscaping, more street furniture, more amenities for the community and better serves the businesses and residents. Grant programs, landscaping, maintenance, public art, other amenities, it's all in there. It all changes annually when they go through into their planning process. So these are some numbers that are probably hard to read. I'm going to speak to them a little bit. There were three different projections that were contemplated for this plan. A modest projection of 1% growth annually, one that contemplates 2.5%, and one that contemplates 5%. Five's pretty unlikely. The one that is, the staff and us as consultant believe is most likely is that middle band, that middle yellow one. So again, it starts out small, $22,000 a year. As it goes on, it grows. It's not an astronomical number, but when you look at what you're able to do over 30 years, it's about a million dollars. And 980,000 is not going to be the number at the end of 30 years, but it's going to be something like that. But again, that doesn't contemplate somebody comes in and invest half a million dollars in upgrading their building. That's more value and more taxes goes to the DDA. Go ahead. So process standpoint, commission reviews and the request and votes to set a public hearing. Tonight's the public hearing. The DDA has their, they've approved their TIF and development plan and made this recommendation to the city commission that they're reviewing tonight. There's a whole bunch of notices that have to be sent out as part of this process. You may have seen it posted 20 places throughout the physical district. All the other taxing entities are noticed, all the residents, or rather, all of the property owners within the district have to be notified. And then the public hearing has to be conducted, the notice and plan adoption published in the newspaper, and then the plan would be filed with the Secretary of State. Something I did not say on the infographic explaining TIF, which is probably the most important part, is that this is not a new tax. Your tax bill, if you're a property owner within the district, does not go up one penny because of the TIF plan. It's just how those funds are allocated after they're collected. That might be it. One more? Oh, so what's next? Assuming that commission were to approve this tonight, the baseline would be set at the start of next year and the increment would start being captured. There's a resident advisory group, which Kelly mentioned, that is made up of people that live within the district. They chime in on the plans that the DDA board comes up with and that budget, and then every year it goes through that public process and is approved as part of the city's annual budget. That's it?
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Tom, would anyone from yourself or anyone from the DDA like to make comment?
Sure. I'm going to look, I still live at 700 Lions Park Drive. I think, I don't know, it's been a couple hours, so you know, I don't know what could happen. Any rate, so I am the Chair of the Downtown Development Authority. This is something we've been talking about for quite some time. This is a really a terrific tool for us to capture funds. We have a relatively modest budget, quite frankly, not to minimize $60,000, but in the scope of activities that happen within a community like ours, it's frankly, it's a drop in a bucket. So this tool is a very exciting opportunity for us to begin to accumulate some funds to direct toward some of the projects that Andrew's described. They're shockingly expensive to do a parking lot or street or streetscape or any of these activities. It's a bit mind-boggling to me frankly, and I'm an accountant, to find out how expensive these things can be. So this opportunity to capture this piece of revenue, as Andrew points out, this isn't a tax increase, this is directing some of those funds to the downtown area so that we can utilize them for some of the activities that we think are important. So we think this is very important. We think this is very exciting, along with all the other things we've talked about this evening. And you know, we hope that the commission gives us their support.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, any questions or comments from the commission?
Great overview of how to, you know, again, this is not a new, you know, tool, you know, out of the shadows. This is a common tool that, you know, it's, we could have gotten, you know, some more use out of it over the years, but better late than never. And as we look forward, you know, it's not about, you know, we, if you look at the downtown now, there's a lot of different infrastructure opportunities. And as we look forward to the next 15, 20, 30 years from now, this will better equip those future generations as we look to bring more people in. This will better equip them to handle those challenges and hopefully we'll be able to fix quite a bit of it for them, but this puts us on the path for the future. So thank you.
Yeah, I think we've seen tonight how important our downtown is to everybody who lives in the community. So frankly, I'm excited that the DDA could have some ownership and some more ability to be nimble and things that they know are important down there.
Yeah, one of the first questions I had in the first couple of months, I was a commissioner talking to some people on the DDA, I said, you know, why are you more active? Why aren't you doing these things downtown? We don't have any money. So this is going to, as Michael said, this is going to be a path moving forward, how we can start to accomplish some of the goals downtown. It will be slow and incremental at first. We can look back 20 years and say, we wish we'd have done it 20 years ago, but 20 years from now, we'll be glad we started it today. So that's how we have to look at it.
I move to close the public hearing on the TIF.
Yeah, okay, go ahead. I think we have public comments? Yeah, I think we have to.
I guess we'll do that first.
Yeah. Are there any public comments on the subject? And I think this lady's going to go and then you can come up after her, is that okay? She stood up first, she's just farther back. She stood up first, she's just farther back.
Sandra Mason, still on Columbia Avenue at the moment. My, my first concern is when you say there are no new taxes. There are no new taxes for the 5% of taxpayers in the district. Their taxes are capped. But there's a number of things in the city budget. The library, the band, streets, garbage collection, those type of things that still require payment. So if the 5% of taxpayers downtown aren't paying them, where does the money come from as inflation and these things incrementally rise in cost? I mean, I really would like, before you commit this city to 30 years, to have an understanding of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Andrew can probably clear that up right away.
I, I can, just a couple of things. The Tiff does not impose a new tax on anyone. Downtown taxes are not capped. They could, there could be a voted millage that people could decide they want to do. So they're not capped. It is simply that, that the growth within the district, within that 2% of the city's landmass, stays within the district.
Thanks for that clarification. Another public comment?
Ann Barnes, 608 Market Street. I need another Claire to be kind. When you use the word capture, that means you're going to take, right? So where are you taking this from? And if you're taking it from someone, you're capturing it, they're losing something. So who's losing? And then are they, they're going to have to replenish that? And how are they going to replenish what has been captured?
Andrew, would you like to address that?
Sure.
Sure.
You'll just give the best answer.
I need you to be clear and kind.
I'm, I strive to always be clear and kind. Thank you. So the, I mean, I may look to City Attorney Schmidt here on this. Lake Michigan College, County Millage, Cities, Cities General Millage. So that, or Operating Millage, that's where that growth comes from. So the growth in those, there are, the library does levy a tax. I do not believe that that is eligible to be captured because the libraries have a very savvy lobbying voice in Lansing. So those would be the three millages that would be captured. So again, they're not losing, they are just not getting the growth on that very small piece. So 2% of the city's land, when you push that out to the county, I don't know what the number is, but I mean, it is, this is the county. You, you probably can't see the dot that is downtown St. Joe, so.
Yeah, and to be further clear and hopefully deliver it kindly, the original value continues, the, the part of that, that taxation that is in place when the Tiff starts, that continues to go to those other taxing authorities or bodies. It's only the growth that is captured during that period which is diverted to the DDA.
And the argument is that by reinvesting within your downtown, that will accelerate that growth within the downtown so that when it comes back fully, flows all the way through, there's a lot more. It's kind of turbocharging the investment in downtown. You make it a better place to come, more investment comes, more business comes, more improvements to buildings happen.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Hello, Paul Knapp, and I'm still the Executive Director of St. Joseph's today. And I'm speaking from that perspective, but also the perspective of a 13-year member and somebody who owns a minivan that's covered in Cheetos and graham crackers constantly. And I look at this, I look at tonight's agenda and the three initiatives that are being highlighted, and I feel like I'm winning because the, these, these initiatives parlayed are an incredible opportunity to transform St. Joe into the modern era. And it's just an incredible vision for the venue that is downtown St. Joseph and the improvements that can be made down there. I get the privilege of attending all the monthly DDA meetings and getting to see the plans that we don't have the funding for and just, that's, this, that's the community that I am excited to live in. And I'm, I'm so appreciative of the vision that you have for my kids, who I hope will want to live here into the future and that they can have a city that they can be proud of. So thanks for considering these three initiatives, and it really does feel like we're winning with an incredible vision for how to transform this community into the modern era.
Carl Meyer, 505 Properties. We keep on referring to as the downtown area. And so my question is, why do we have the dot that only shows a portion of the downtown area? Why doesn't it encumber more area than what is shown on the, just designated area? That's my question.
I, I can't speak to why the boundary was drawn that way, but it has had the current boundary since 2013.
Yeah. Why does the DDA restrict it to the?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Laurie?
Yeah, I, when the original Downtown Development Authority District was established, it has to have set boundaries. It's actually been adjusted over time. I think 2013 was the last time it was amended, and that's a district that has been approved. The funds can only be used in that specific area unless there's been a change, you know, to the boundaries.
You're absolutely correct. But I'm saying that area should be larger than what is shown to involve all of the downtown area that is considered downtown.
So if I understand you correctly, you would like us to explore expanding the DDA area?
Right, to involve all of the downtown area. There's businesses that you're not including in this.
Yes, yeah, and that's a possibility. It's not something that could be done tonight because we have to take the procedures. But yeah, that's certainly something that could be considered.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Can we direct staff to get with Tom Golick and the rest of the, the board and outline those steps? And then they can undertake a, a discussion as to whether or not they want to expand that and how that might happen?
Please God. Her pen out. Yes.
Okay. Yes. Aaron Miller, 1110 Flanders Place. I guess I didn't hear an official list of the affected tax entities. Something that I saw from the packet is the city ourself, Lake Michigan College, County General, 911, Law Enforcement, Senior Center, and Parks. Not sure if that's entirely accurate, but I did get that information from your packet. I don't feel it's appropriate to take the tax revenue increases from those entities. I think it would be more appropriate to raise the DDA millage to two, to lower the city millage by that same amount, and then the rest of the funds be handled in the normal budgetary process. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? I think we handled the responses on a one-off basis, so I don't know that. So I think we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I will now make a motion to close the public hearing on the DDA Tiff District.
Support.
Abby?
Commissioner Ory? Yes. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes. Public hearing officially closed at 8:00 PM. Okay, we are on to item number 19, First Reading, Ordinance to amend Downtown Development Authority Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan. And Kelly is back yet again.
I am still the Development Director.
All right.
I think. So much like our previous two, I'm not going to go through it all again, but just to reiterate, this is something the DDA has been working on for, well, before I started here about a year ago. But we have gone through all the steps necessary to get this in front of you in a format to be hopefully approved. The Resident Advisory Council was implemented and has met to discuss the plan, sent their recommendation to the DDA, who also approved it and is sending their recommendation. They did that on October 21st. Many, many notices were sent out, many notices were posted. So I am asking for your approval of the motion in front of you to approve the first reading of the ordinance adopting the Downtown Development Authority Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the commission?
I have no further questions, no?
No. Any public comments on this subject? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move to, go ahead.
I move to approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances, Article 2, Section 10-20, adopting the Downtown Development Authority Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan and adding Sections 10-21 through 10-24.
Support.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to reports. That brings us to reports. Abby, do you have any reports for us tonight?
Uh, yeah, just a small one. I'm kidding. We have an election coming up on Tuesday, November 4th. There are six candidates on the ballot for three open seats on the City Commission. Two candidates who received the two greatest number of votes in the election will receive four-year terms. The candidate who receives the third greatest number of votes will receive a two-year term. The candidates on the ballot are Kim Jorgensen-Gane, Lisa Vetney, Michael Fernandez, Mike Sorolla, Ryan Kadowich, and Tom Jennings. There are also two school proposals on the ballot as well, two from LMC and one from St. Joe, St. Joseph's Schools. I did a count on Thursday. As of Thursday, the 23rd, 1,866 absentee ballots were issued. To date, to that date, we had 687 that have been returned. Absentee ballots must be turned into clerk's office or dropped in our Dropbox at City Hall at 8:00 o'clock on the close of polls on Election Day, which again is next Tuesday, November 4th. We will be also open on Saturday, November 1st, that's this coming Saturday, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So if you can't make it in during the office hours, stop in and see us. The last day to pick up a ballot in person is Monday before the election, so November 3rd. You must do so before 4:00. And of course, as always, if you have questions, please give the clerk's office a call, and don't forget to vote, uh, vote on November 4th.
Okay, thank you, Abby. Next, we're on to City Manager comments.
Thank you. I have a few of them. What a great night in forward motion for the City of St. Joseph. I just want to recognize Kristen Gunnerson, Kelly E. Walt, who have worked so hard on our staff to move this forward, as well as our partner Andrew Hahn at Cornerstone, who we are so grateful for. Also, just a quick shout out, I don't know if she's here, to Kayla. She is here, who helped to plan so many great events in our downtown through October. We just had Truck or Treat moved to the downtown for the first time on Saturday night, and it was an absolute hit. My kids loved it, I loved it, it was really great. And that follows Scary Movie Night, which did kind of get rained out. But before that, Place St. Joe, which was another fabulous event. And those all go hand in hand with what Paul Knapp and St. Joe today have been doing with the new downtown Spooktacular and downtown Trick or Treating, which is coming this week. Just really excited about Kayla and Paul and that partnership and everything great that's been happening downtown this month.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Next is City Commission comments.
I'm, I'm talked out. Good job, everybody.
I think it's, uh, it's our responsibility to, to do things that will hopefully leave, leave the city better than we found it. And, and over the last two years, there's been many opportunities to do that, but tonight is a, a good, all-encompassing way that the, the actions that we've taken tonight, I firmly believe will be in the best interest of the city in the long term for the next 20 to 30 years, and, and that is the goal. So thank you to everyone who put a lot of work into making some of these things happen. And there's certainly so much more work to be done. It costs a lot to stay in place and to keep things the way that they are. And if you love a city like ours, in order to love it properly, you need to let it grow because it costs a lot to, to keep it the same, and it is, it is impossible. The moment you complete something, it starts falling apart. And so you have to be constantly looking at, how can we make things better and how can we improve? And I'm proud of the work that we've done over the last few years. We're on that track. Tonight was some huge milestones in that, and I, I'm excited about the future in St. Joseph. So thank you, guys.
Great. Well, tonight's a big night for the City of St. Joe, no question about it. We've seen opportunities and ideas and excitement around other plans boil up to a fever pitch and then go away and fail. That's been going on for a long time. It's, it's nice to get this one across this part of the finish line. I think it's going to be a tremendous asset to the city, the residents, the visitors, the business owners. Everyone's going to win in this, not to mention the expansion of our tax base. Like Michael indicated, I've heard many, many constituents say, I like St. Joe the way it is. I like it the way it is too, but the reality is we can't afford it anymore. We've lost a lot of population, we've lost a lot of tax base. We need to grow our tax base and make it more affordable for the residents, residents that are here. And in the process, offer them, you know, additional dining options, additional retail options, and a little more year-round vibrancy downtown. The last thing I want to mention is, I hear a lot of people that are concerned about the project talk about the character of St. Joe, and it's a, it's a, a real concern. I understand that. St. Joe is a unique place, it has a unique character. But I'd just like to point out, a lot, a lot of that character is the people that live in St. Joe. We make it the character that it is. That's not changing. We still are who we are. We're nice Midwesterners, we're welcoming people, and that doesn't change. So we can, we can maintain the character with a little bit different building. So I'm looking forward to the, the future, and I'm, I'm really thrilled to be part of this progress tonight. Okay, and with that, we will adjourn the meeting.